We used to attend symposium with medical people down in Vermillion in our younger days. And we've, we've been in contact ever since. He's a little younger than I am. I, I do want to add one other thing. We share something else in common that we both had parents who were on county commissioners. And it gives us a very interesting view of how the whole process works. And I guess one last note is that for a couple of years, as you remember, your mother and I talked a lot on the phone. A simple transposition of phone numbers meant that she would call me just about the time I was having breakfast. And we had quite good conversations, usually once or twice a month.
We don't have to go into detail up until.
No, we do not. We will not. But I do know that she would be very proud of you and what you have achieved. And both she and your dad. And again, I, I want to congratulate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Can we find out about Doug? Okay. All right. It is seven 10s. Should we just keep going with the next person or is he going to be here momentarily? All right. Seven 10, we'll come back to Mr. Mooreport. Riken's RV Park, Matt Evans, conditional use permit applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a campground and a pool in a lakeside commercial district. As per Article 11, section 1107. Said property is legally described as proposed lot 16, Whitetail Run in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section 16. T93 North, range 56 West, hereafter referred to as Utica South Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. The E911 address is to be determined Buck Street, Yankton, South Dakota. All right. And if you just want to step forward and give us an idea of what your plans are, sir, and I need you to speak the name for the record.
You bet. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ross Denherger. I am legal counsel for Matt Evans. His company, Riken RV Park, Inc., is under contract to purchase this property and will be the one developing that area. If this sounds familiar to you, it is, or at least to some of you who were on the planning commission this last fall. This is a revisit to a conditional use permit that was granted this fall by this board and by the county commission sitting as the Board of Adjustment. Through that process, Mr. Evans received some interesting questions and pondered his plan and decided that it was actually appropriate to scale his design back a little bit. And he has decided to submit a, an additional or a new request for a CUP, which if granted, would replace the one that was, was granted by the Board of Adjustment this last fall. The primary change would be to scale back the number of campsites from 77 down to 25. If you look at the site plan that's in the packet there, you will see that the northern area is bare land. That used to be 12 additional campsites. So this would scale back the design, resulting in a total of 65 instead of 77 campsites. This design also corrects the roadway along the western boundary. Previously, the design contemplated that traffic would flow down to the south out of what is referred to as Alphonse Road. There is some pressure on that road amongst the neighbors and the, the common use of that area. In consultation with the developer, it made sense to create a primary access along what is called Doe Road or Doe Drive along the western boundary of that property. So the primary access in and out of that location will be heading to the north instead of to the south. That should be better for the neighborhood. It should make the neighbors a little happier, I think. In the conditional use permit that was granted by the Board of Adjustment, there was a condition that western, the western boundary of Mr. Evans' property and the eastern boundary have a fence line. That would be continued as part of this plan. The other change that you may notice if you compare the plan that was approved under the last conditional use permit to this one submitted today is the change of number of sites also resulted in a reconfiguration of the septic system locations. So if you were to hold those site plans side by side, that would be a difference as well. In looking at the items, this commission needs to make findings regarding under section 1805 of your planning and zoning ordinance. I wish to hit each of those line items and make what I feel to be appropriate comments related to this project. The first I'd like to address is ingress and egress and structures. So as I've indicated, the primary entrance for ingress and egress is going to be from the north from Doe Avenue and then Buck Street as platted. Mr. Christensen and Whitetail Properties, the developer, is building out Buck Street. Mr. Evans and Mr. Christensen will work out between them, construction of Doe Avenue, and that will be constructed as a condition of this, this build out. They're working out between them who's going to do it, but that will have to be done for this to work. As I indicated, for the benefit of the neighborhood, this will result in a reduced dependence on Alphonse Road. This design, as approved previously, does contain a pool, lazy river, and splash pad. My client does intend to operate that outfit in conformance with Department of Health, Construction, and Testing requirements. A condition of the conditional use as granted by the Board of Adjustment required a fence with a lock around the pool area. He does intend to continue to adhere to that obligation. It's a logical safety and liability concern. Another consideration for this board is off right-of-way parking and loading areas as well as economic noise, glare, or odor effects on adjoining properties. This particular design will involve no right-of-way parking or loading. Adjoining properties are campgrounds on two sides and have similar uses. Essentially, there will be three campgrounds surrounding this campground. There will be privacy fences along the western and eastern property line as required by the prior CUP. And there will be off-site, I'm sorry, off-roadway parking spots for each campsite. So that should eliminate or alleviate the, the issues associated with the right-of-way parking and loading concerns as well as the economic noise, glare, and odor effects on adjoining properties. As it relates to refuse and service areas, refuse will be handled using dumpsters made available to campers and a private garbage hauling service will be utilized. Wastewater will be handled via five septic systems located on the site plan. You will see an S marked where each of those septic systems are going in. Septic systems will conform to all D E N R requirements. We have inquired with the D E N R and there is no permitting for this type of septic system. But the septic, septic systems will go in by a licensed installer and they will be maintained to D E N R specifications. Utilities, electricity and water connections are available in the southwest corner of the proposed campground as marked on the site plan. That's not a deviation from the prior plan that was approved. These connections have been engineered by the utility providers and are sufficient for the loads expected by the campground. As it relates to screening and buffering, as required under the prior conditional use permit approved by the Board of Adjustment, a privacy fence is required along the eastern and western lot lines. And those must be completed within one year from the granting of the CUP. As to the northern boundary and the southern boundary, the southern boundary is bordered by a campground also owned by Mr. Evans. It seemed to make screening in that direction sort of irrelevant. And to the north, he has an option to acquire that piece of ground for future expansion, which he intends to exercise at some point as well. My opinion, screening to those directions would just make a, a burden or a cost that would just have to be undone or torn down at a later date. As it relates to signs and exterior lighting and compatibility with the neighborhood, my client intends to use minimal downcast lighting as required for safety to reduce light glare nuisance to the neighborhood. Campers don't like a lot of extra lights. Neither will the neighbors. Sinage would be minimal. If there is signage, it would be attached to the fences. Required yards and open spaces. The front yard for this particular operation is considered Doe. Doe is the, the right-of-way that, that is the boundary to this particular property. So that will be the, the frontage requiring a 75-foot setback. There are no structures planned for that area. Any other structures or setbacks are required in this zone to be 25 feet for any structures. There's no plans to build any structures within that 25-foot setback. There are also no structures planned to be placed on top of any septic systems in accordance with D E N R best practices. And lastly, general compatibility with adjacent properties and conditional uses will not adversely affect the public interest. Essentially, as I've indicated, this is just a scaled back version of what this, this board already approved and what the county Board of Adjustment has already approved. It's surrounded by existing campgrounds. My client commits to being in compliance with all Yankton County subdivision ordinance requirements. All drainage plans have already been engineered and approved by Yankton County as a condition of the approval of the subdivision. So in summary, on behalf of my client, I ask you all to approve this version of an amended CUP. If denied, he can live with the terms of the larger campground under the CUP that has already been granted. However, this plan was the result of good comments and good thought made during the CUP approval process from this last fall. All the comments collectively led to a better plan, which remains in keeping with the neighborhood and reduces traffic dependence on Alphonse Road. All of these things are desirable and should make things a little more harmonious in the neighborhood. If anyone has any questions or if there's public comment, I would politely ask that you give me an opportunity to respond. Thank you.
Okay, just wait a second. Do we have any questions from the board at this point?
Was the lazy river in the last?
It was.
It was. I missed that.
Yeah, it's no problem.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this proposed change? Hey, you need to come forward and speak your names for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Ryan Heine. I own the property directly to west of Matt. And this is not a plan that, this new CUP is not a plan to increase the harmony of the neighborhood. Matt has been disagreeable about Alphonse Road quite a bit in the past three years since he started down there. Made numerous accusations against me and so forth. Our request was just simple, that we just share the cost of maintaining the road and that's it. This is, what this does is it brings a road right down, right next to our entertainment area, entertainment area. It really pretty much definitely puts the nail in the coffin for our business. We'll probably have to cancel all plans for the summer with this plan. Because we will now have to deal with a road construction running right next to what was pretty peaceful until Matt moved in. We were fine with the larger campground. We were fine with everything on the original CUP. We came to an agreement that day. All we wanted was a simple fence to create a good border. This new plan now is going to definitely invade our space. And with traffic, Matt's traffic directly into our yard. And it's just not going to improve anything on Alphonse Road because all the traffic that's on Alphonse Road will still be on Alphonse Road. We will still have the issues down there because there is thousands of people using Alphonse Road through the summer. And it's just overused right now for the size it is. And the original premise of that was, you know, that we need to have a full-size road out there. It's roughly about 60% of what it needs to be. It's built as a lane to my farm. And all we've ever asked for was just Matt to expand the road and we set up a, a road agreement to share the costs. So I do ask that you reject the CUP and let the original CUP stand.
Any other comments from the audience?
On that original one, was he going to share that road expense for what, on this Alphonse Road?
On the original one, it was supposed to be, he was supposed to have a road agreement in place. And he was supposed to make sure that it got expanded to a proper road. Right, right now it's all kind of like half-built, mostly all on one side.
Okay, anybody else want to speak on this topic? No one? Did you want to answer this question?
Okay, Mr. Heine did bring up a number of good points. However, it's misleading at best. From my conversations with Mr. Evans, what he has informed me is the, the, the roadwork on Alphonse Road has been entirely at his own expense. And he needed to get it done in order to have a proper roadway to reach his campground. What I think Mr. Heine fails to appreciate here is that by making the primary access to this campground from the north, all of these campers that will be at this particular location would come in from the north, not from Alphonse Road to the south. So it would greatly reduce the traffic on Alphonse Road compared to the CUP that has already been approved. There will be much less traffic on Alphonse Road. In response to Mr. Heine's concerns or complaints about a road project along the boundary of his property, what he fails to appreciate is Doe Road is a public right-of-way. It's platted to be a public right-of-way. It's unfortunate that road construction is, is a burden. Quite frankly, it's always burdensome when the road in front of your property is being built. I've never found anybody that has enjoyed going through a road construction process, process adjacent to his or her property. But that's where the road ought to go. That's where this commission and the Board of Adjustment saw fit. When the plat was originally approved, that's where the road was platted. That's where the road will be built. That's where it's supposed to be built. There will be a fence along the western boundary of Mr. Evans' campground. That was a condition of the CUP. Fences make great neighbors. There will be a fence bound, on the boundary of his property and, and Mr. Heine's. As it relates to what was required in the prior CUP, there's a semantics issue there because we actually have two CUPs at issue here. There was the one that was just approved this last fall. And I believe he's referring to the CUP that was approved all the way back in 2018. That was the CUP for the campground that lies to the south. I have the minutes of this board, the findings of fact from that meeting in February of 2018. And I'll quote from the findings of fact. "The planning commission discussed the application and determined the subdivision ordinance will govern road standards, proper right-of-way standards, and assist with, with drainage and road maintenance agreements. There was no requirement that any road agreement be entered into." And then again, in the minutes approved by the Board of Adjustment in March of 2018, simply says, "A motion was made by Kettering and seconded by Epp to approve a conditional use permit for Matt Evans based on findings of fact from the February 13, 2018, Yankton County Planting, Planning Commission meeting and on file in the zoning administrator's office for a 70 camping unit campground in a lakeside commercial district in Yankton County. There's no additional conditions that are added." in a lakeside commercial district in Yankton County. There's no additional conditions that are added. So I, I do not want you to be misled. There was an attempt by my client, he showed me correspondence in which he, he asked for the neighbors to help pitch in for a road maintenance agreement. The neighbors flat refused, which is why all the roadwork that accesses my client's campground was shared by nobody but himself. He's put in thousands on that road. So please don't be misled.
What, what neighbors?
Uh, Mr. Heine, and I believe the gentleman to the east is.
Fisher Golden?
Yeah, it's the campground immediately to the west or to the east. And I think below that is the, the, the trailer park, but I believe that trailer park had its own access Gary Road, which I think through that process was also tried to be phased out. I'm not sure if they were successful. But Alphonse was supposed to take the place, but all the roadwork was paid for according to my client by himself. That includes. I would. Questions are posed to you, not me.
We don't, we don't have a lot of information here. Is this all you've got, too?
What I'm thinking is, Tom, this is, this road is being constructed here to access this lot. They're fencing here and fencing here. So the only access to this lot is going to be off of this road they're going to construct between you two.
This is Deer Boulevard.
This is Deer Boulevard and this is Buck Street.
This is north and south. This is east and west.
See, and that, this was added in here. There's a road easement that they've got here, and I think that's what he's saying is they've put an easement in to get road to access the lot.
Can you guys see up here? Alphonse Road comes in off of Deer Boulevard from the north. And then heads west, there is the, uh, I think that's called Whitetail Campground here. This is Yankton RV Park owned by Reichen RV Park, Inc. It's Mr. Evans campground in this location. Alphonse comes along the southern boundary and then it comes into Mr. Heine's property over here. So as this will lay out, there is Buck that's being built. And Buck will come in east to west. And then there will be a, the, the Doe Road constructed along the western boundary here. This is the right-of-way over here. There is a plat that's part of the packet. I don't have a copy to, I don't know how to put it up there on the screen for anybody.
No, I think we do the statements.
You do. What is the, what is the road recast?
It's Deer Boulevard.
Well, I've got, I've got my fetal partner lives there. Chris Bland, and that's, they, they, uh, they got a, uh, road agreement on Chris, uh, on Deer Boulevard down there.
Now, is there any setbacks from a residential house to where this is getting built? Is there any required setbacks? Gone from a resident to campground? Or is that where you're doing the fence line is considered a barrier?
Chairperson, I would politely ask that.
Yeah.
Just talk with the person at the podium and invite them to.
You can't just speak out in the audience. I'm sure that you haven't attended a lot of these meetings. But if you want, the time for, for public input would have been before this, but if we let him finish showing and look up there, then you can ask to go up and, and ask your questions, but you can't just speak from the audience because we need to have it recorded on record. And there is no setbacks from the residents. The setbacks are his responsibility to meet for the boundaries of his property. So this is your opportunity to voice your concerns at this public meeting. And and you'll have another opportunity to ask questions and raise concerns when this goes to the county commission.
Okay. Can you still hear me okay on the video if I lean over a little? So here is the plat that we're looking at. North is actually to the right. You can see Highway fifty-two on the far right-hand side over here. The southern, um, boundary of this document shows us Deer Boulevard. I'm, I'm sorry, the eastern boundary because it's flipped. You see Buck Street cutting through the middle here. Buck Street goes east to west up to Doe Avenue, which you see on the western side at the top of the, the screen here. These are public right-of-ways as platted. The area that is the subject of this C U P is this lot sixteen. So Alphonse Road is down here. This is the existing Yankton RV Park. And then this is going to be the new area, uh, that is going to be constructed under the C U P. So in order to reduce the burden on Alphonse Road to the south, we've got traffic coming in through Buck Street, which will be constructed, uh, by the developer. And, um, Mr. Evans will work with the developer to get Doe Avenue built out as well so that the primary route of access will be coming in from the north.
So what's going to enforce that primary? How are you going to enforce the primary route from the north?
That'll be up to him in terms of controlling access further to the south.
So you told me it isn't going to be controlled.
Well, I, I don't know the answer to that question, but I can call my client. We can ask him quick.
Well, you know, he's not out there and watch.
What?
You know, he's not going to sit out there and watch.
Where there's a will, there's a way. However, that, that road on the western boundary already exists. So look at it from the perspective of a camper, if you would, for me for a moment, Commissioner Kettering. The primary access into this campground comes from the north. There's going to be a brand-new road put in there. It's going to be put in by the developer as a brand-new road from the north. So those people coming from Deer Boulevard are not going to want to drive further to the south to come up the back access through an existing campground. They're going to want to come from the north through the primary access. That's where they're going to have the presentation to the public. Um, that's the grassy area. That's the, that's the nice presentation when people drive in. So quite frankly, logic dictates that people are going to want to use the north, not the south. It's a further drive coming from the south.
And you can do it with signage as well.
Sure.
Put the signage up there and they'll follow the signs.
Yeah. And, uh, putting a sign up is, if that would be an appropriate condition, I'm sure we could accommodate that.
So, uh, to address Mr. Heine's issue, would it be possible to build the, the fence along, uh, from Doe Avenue? Well, I guess, uh, down to Alphonse Road? Before construction starts?
Bear in mind, um, Commissioner Kettering, that's, that's not land that he owns. You know what I mean? That's.
The first part isn't, but he's got an option on it.
He's got an option, property further to the north. This lot sixteen that you see right here.
Yeah.
This is what he's got the option to purchase. So if he expands, he'll be expanding this direction to the north.
Right.
So this is already completely built out. Mr., Mr. Heine, I, I think would prefer to have this entire street fenced because he's got the hops farm up here that he has the public come in and they do, um, you know, social things. They do some really neat stuff up there. But, um, quite frankly, the reality is they have neighbors. You know, the neighbors are entitled to use their property within the appropriate confines of a conditional use permit, which this commission and the board of adjustment has already granted with appropriate conditions, which will be maintained carried forward. So this actually puts less burden on the neighborhood. There are simply less campsites, so it'll be.
So what you're telling me, they wouldn't consider building the fence first before they build the road?
Well, you don't want the fence in the way when they're trying to construct the road.
It won't be. They'll put it right where it's supposed, where, where they're proposing to have it now, but would block the construction of this second project to Heine's.
Uh, the, the problem with that theory, Commissioner Kettering, is that the right-of-way that you see for Doe Avenue is narrower there because it's missing the second half waiting for Mr. Heine to someday plat that out, which he may or may not do. Which means it's only thirty-three feet to, so in order to fit a proper road in there, there's really not room for construction on either side. Just the practical reality with the room that he's got in the right-of-way in which to build it. It seems like an appropriate obligation to build the fence.
You're talking about the existing campground.
The, I'm talking about the actual right-of-way that you see here for Doe Avenue along this corridor here. It's one half of the ordinary width because it's missing the development of this side. See that? Normally, see, if you look at this right-of-way, you've got this piece and this piece. And over here, you've got this piece and this piece. So this is only one half. So if you put in an obligation, he's got to put a fence here. There, there's not enough room to put a fence there and then build it. It's really tight.
Are you proposing to put the fence on the, would it be the eastern side of the right-of-way of Doe Avenue?
That wasn't the plan. It could be the plan. Uh, if you actually look at the site plan. Uh, okay, here is the western boundary. This is the boundary of this property. If you see it here. So the fence was going to go here, 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 and here because the, they have to be able to get in. In theory, a fence could be put here, but that's not land that he owns. So that would be my heartburn, putting up a fence on, um, you know, public, someone else's property, public property. It's effectively the boundary between public property and Mr. Heine's property.
Granted, when they lay that out.
Inside of right.
He basically owns the right-of-way from here to here.
Well, no, this is public right-of-way. This has been dedicated, so.
Bro, even though it's not developed. Is that, it's just an old section line is what it is.
I believe that's right. You'd have to look at, have to zoom back.
Close section. We don't have the close.
Yeah, I have to zoom out a beacon and see if it's actually a, uh, a section line highway. Cause if it is, then there'd be other right-of-way that could be utilized on the other side. I just can't be certain of that.
Can you drop that picture down just a little bit, please? So that you see that, no, the other way. So it shows the east side of this thing.
There's also a private road access on this side. But it's, it's uncertain if that's going to be built out because there's, there's questions as to rights of access because it's not public right-of-way.
Okay, that is not public access. Move into that. But on your, on your, uh, plot before that, where it shows that road, it actually looks like that is a a right-of-way.
I'm sorry, I went the wrong direction. My mouse here. Here you go.
What you show here comes into this lot.
Zoom into that.
Buck Street here. And that looks like a right-of-way, but that ends right here.
If, if you look at this language right here where my mouse is, it says, private road easement. So there's a question as to who's got those rights and what they mean, and we have to do some research to that. So we're not banking on that being legal access, but if it is, that could only help. You know what I mean? We just can't rely on it because we only have the rights that are there.
Looking at an option on that, on that lot at some point.
That's right.
Right now, we're dealing with sixteen, not fifty.
Correct. Yeah. So it, once he owns that, this will be kind of a moot point on that piece because he'll have access being the owner of the side of that. But until that occurs, I can't present as though that's going to be a useful source of entry and exit because we just don't know that we have the rights to do anything with that. Yeah. And eventually that, that will get simpler. It's just, it's just the next phase. So we'll have to wait for that. Um, Mr. Evans, I should have mentioned this from the beginning. He was planning to be here. His wife has COVID nineteen, so he's on quarantine. He's watching this live and he just sent me a rash of text messages that I think might be helpful. One of them is a screenshot, looks like it's dating to, uh, December of, December fifteen of twenty twenty. It's a text message chain between Mr. Evans and Mr. Heine talking about, uh, shared obligations on Alphonse Road. Mr. Heine said, well, you know what you need to do and I'm not paying for it. That's another indication that an agreement of the neighbors is a, a challenging thing and, uh, as a result, he tells me here, I paid three thousand dollars for Culver, dug out my ditch and Whitetail's ditch and filled potholes at my expense. So he's willing to do what's required to maintain it and he's also trying to reduce the, uh, the burden on Alphonse Road. If there's any other questions you would like me to pose to him, I'm happy to give him a quick call. Just the, the difficulty associated with being in quarantine.
So basically what you're saying about the fences that are going to, that you're proposing to put on there, they will basically just be screening where the camper area parks, but there will be a driveway out to Doe Avenue out of Beach.
That's correct. Yes, correct. Not aware of a practical way around that, but that is, if you drive past, if you drive down the bluff, down Highway fifty-two and you see Reichen RV Park on the right, that's the way that is too. It's, there's a privacy fence and the openings are just for the driveways in and out. It presents pretty good to the highway.
I may be a little dense, but I'm having trouble. You're talking, put a, put a east fence up and a west fence up, but you tell me you can't put the west fence up because you, you don't have the right-of-way.
The west fence has to be on his property line. I'll go back up a little bit.
Yeah.
So the west fence is on his property line, but you can't fence the driveway going in and out. That's, that would just be impractical. So in order to fence this entire thing, it would have to be on the boundary between the public property right-of-way and Mr. Heine's property. Yeah, it's, it's basically the border between the public property and Mr. Heine's property. It's not, it's not Mr. Evans' property.
So you can't build a house, uh, uh, first of all, you shouldn't be building a fence in the right-of-way.
Well, I agree.
If it's a public right-of-way and you cannot build a fence on someone else's property.
Have you been out there? You could build a fence out there. There's a lot of room there.
Yep.
Any more questions for me?
Any more questions?
And again, please permit me an opportunity to respond to anything new.
Okay, we can't do this all night. We're going to give you two minutes. Okay? Because there are people waiting.
So first, I'd like to address these text messages. Text messages is a very poor form of communication. It's also can be taken out of context very easily and readily. And so I do not think that what Mr. Denhager was implying. And so I do not think that what Mister Denherder was implying. I mean, it's completely taken out of context and that is not the story. Number two, Matt did not spend any money constructing those roads. The first half of Alphonse Road is paved. It was constructed a long time ago by the Mobile Home Park. The second half was constructed under my expense. Far greater than three thousand dollars to build up that much road. And all of that was built on my expense. Matt did do drainage ditch along his property. That's because he built himself into a hole. His property now sits three feet below mine, which is yet another concern about this expanded. Is he going to continue this hole that he dug already? Is he gonna have to have more drainage ditch being dug out because he's built himself so low? Um, he did. He did do that and he has filled a few potholes. Not nearly as many as I have. Not nearly as many as the Mobile Home Park has. And this year, it's really come to a head as Matt has people living down there full time. It doesn't doesn't feel like he has to have bear any responsibility for clearing snow or filling in potholes or the road needs gravel. We'd like to put that on, but no one really wants to put themselves out there until we can all come to the table. Now, I did, I have been working with, trying to work with Matt on getting a road agreement. His first proposal required me to pay for like eighty percent of the road costs because I was using all the road. And he also leveled against me many accusations throughout this process. He's been difficult. And in fact, actually, in two thousand eighteen, he actually said Mister Denherder already had a road agreement ready for us. And we never, I never got to see this road agreement. I have asked him multiple times through the years and I never got to see it until he started getting a CUP for this new park expansion. So he's been very difficult to work with. I would love us to have a good park next to us. I would love to have a great neighbor. I'm getting tired of being told one thing and him doing another. So well, I thought we had a good plan put into place from the last CUP and all I'm asking is let's just let that one stand.
Thank you. Right. Two minutes.
My name is Alan Heiney. I just want to go back to beginnings of Alphonse Road. It used to be Gary Road. Many years ago, Horlick's put in a blacktop road and they were very protective of it. Uh, they didn't want any heavy traffic and we were farming to the to the uh, west. And so, uh, I put on a easement on the north side of Alphonse, which now is Alphonse Street. And that easement still written, can still remains in place. The reason for the easement was because we needed to get more room so we could drive to the north of Alphonse Road and say off of their oil. And we did that, okay? For that reason, it's in place yet. Uh, Evans knew that that easement existed and he didn't like it. And he went and built a building right on part of that easement. Uh, and we had this conversation. I was, I and Ryan had this conversation with him about this easement. Um, he seems to kind of just ignore that. Um, if that easement was still be, that still easement is still in place, but he does not want to respect that. And I and I know that counties doesn't enforce easement, but the easement is is with the land. So it is there and that was the reason for it. So it it allowed us to use more to the north. Okay, I don't know why that couldn't be done on the on the on the what Doe Road or the one going to the north. Just move it over a little bit further so he has more room for the road. Uh, just like we did on Alphonse Street. Alphonse Street does not go across the property on the south side. So, um, to me, that might be, and it's maybe part of the solution, just move that whole road further. It's gonna be on his ground. Whether he, if he wants it, move it a little bit further to the his road, a little bit further to the to the east. Now, we'll solve the problem. Then he could have us still have his privacy, privacy fence that we is required to do earlier. That's my comments.
Okay, thank you.
Then that would be a private drive. You could label that as a private drive, correct? Being someone's property. Then that would be what's that if they have to make it a section? Right. Get it right.
Mm-hmm.
That might, that sounds like better.
Could you go back to that beacon picture?
Yep.
If we look at the map to the south there where the current park is, it looks like the western most access road in the current park is all on Evans' property. Why couldn't we have the road continue straight in line with that, leaving out the right of way that would allow Evans to construct a fence on the western side of that private drive, leaving the right of way blank as it is in the current park.
Put the fence right down that 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 western blue line.
Well, it'd be the eastern blue thing.
Or the or the eastern east. I think part of the problem, as it was explained to me when I went out there, is that Mister Evans wants to park stuff, whatever, yeah, in that blue area.
In that right of way?
Yeah.
Um, I I that's the first I've heard of that, but um, bear in mind, commissioners, there is no request for anything to be done with the existing campground. I mean, that's that's history. You know what I mean? And there there's no there's no indication that that Mister Evans has broke the law or viol violated any conditions of the uh, Board of Adjustment. The the site plan as submitted has been modified only in that the main entrance on the west goes all the way up to the north now instead of um, coming down to the south down that right of way corridor. If he can't use Doe, um, he would have to modify his site plan. He would lose campsite locations. He'd have to go back to the drawing board. He likely have to, um, you know, the the utilities and things come in from the southwest corner. He's likely going to have to hire an engineer and retool a lot of stuff. So, um, you know, quite frankly, the plating is completed. The complete, the plating decided where the the rights of way are and the roads are supposed to go in rights of way. That's the way plating is supposed to work. It decides where the future locations of roads are. I think that you're you're it's it's he's willing to put the money in in connection with the the developer to put that road in the place where it's supposed to go. But it's a whole nother thing for him to have to build a road entirely himself on land that's otherwise not required, just so that the right of way as platted can stay green space. That's illogical. But that's the purpose of a right of way. It's supposed to be the road. So and one thing I did, I did get another text from Mister Evans who's monitoring this exercise and he did indicate to me that acknowledges the the Heineys did construct Alphonse Road. That was before he was there. So all the maintenance since he's been there has been his own cost. He did not want me to mislead this board uh, with the impression that he built it and did all of the work. He's just been doing the maintenance. Uh, which has been considerable and there are drainage issues, which is one of the reasons why when this subdivision was approved, a drainage plan had to be approved as part of that. This area that that's being uh, developed out here is already subject to that drainage plan that was part of that subdivision. Does that leave any follow?
Pressure off of Alphonse Road with the current plan.
Yes, that's that's the intent. That's the effort.
The traffic is one, you know, it won't increase the traffic that is already there.
Correct. That's correct.
With the Doe Road that's being constructed, would it be constructed clear up down to the northern border of the current?
Clear up to where Buck Street is, which is encompasses the area to which he has the option.
Yeah.
So looking at this, I can't tell if that's this spot or if it's all the way up here. I'm not quite certain. Uh, I just have the the plat.
Right, I was asking about, I guess it'd be the southern portion of the current, or the northern part.
Oh, would he take it all the way down to the south? I didn't ask him that, but one thing I'd like to point out is if you do that, when you look at Beacon, and we go south here, if he were to continue Doe Road all the way to the south, is that your question?
Or just up to the current part?
Or up to the current part right here?
Right.
That could probably be arranged. However, if Doe Road went all the way down, that would actually turn this into what we call a frontage road. Uh, by your own ordinances, frontage roads are discouraged unless there's a compelling reason for it. So he's built himself a private road. If there was a compelling reason to later build it, that would be the net result. But it does make sense that Doe Road would go all the way down and presumably connect with that. I would have to check with him to make sure he's agreeable to connecting it. I just don't know why he so when he does want to treat him as two separate campgrounds. He wants this new one to be a little higher end. He's putting in the the pool and the splash pad and such. And quite frankly, I think that since it is higher end, I think he wants to maybe have a little higher price point and I think he wants some separation between the two of them. So I don't know entirely what his plan is, but that was a comment he made to me.
So if that was a public right of way that's being built there, would that also be available for Mister Heiney to tie into at that point to alleviate pressure on Alphonse Road with his own traffic?
So if he were to build a connector here to to take Doe up.
Right.
It's public. Once it's built, it's it's right of way. There's nothing that that Michael can do to stop him from using it. It's a connector street and it's supposed to have driveways connect to it. So he may find that a convenience. I don't know.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, um, we can't do this all night.
Okay, I guess my other question is that yellow line on the left, is that actually a section line?
I didn't hear the question.
He wants to know if the line on the left, the yellow line, is a section line or just a property?
Uh, that question was brought up earlier. I'm not certain. Maybe if I zoom back.
Well, if you look at the plat, it's not a section line.
That would certainly make things easier because you'd automatically have right of way on the other side.
It's the sixteen section line.
Hmm, uh, yeah, Deer Boulevard is the section line.
Yeah.
It says that on this map. If you look on oh, lot fifteen, it's that arrow points to the center of that. It says sixteen, one sixteen. One sixteen section line. I see that.
Okay, any other questions for Mister Denherder?
Sure appreciate your time, commissioners. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, any more discussion on the board? I would entertain a motion.
Well, basically what we have here though is it's already been gone through both the the planning commission and the Board of Adjustment and approved as was previously with the more lot more campsites. What he's coming in here for is a modification to the previous.
Right. Uh, because he's made substantial changes.
Reducing the amount of campsites.
Reduce the amount of traffic on Alphonse Road and warrant here by creating another road and another access.
Right, and changing that, you know, hoping to change the access down Buck Street or whatever and down Doe Road to come in on the west side.
Yeah, Doe Drive and Buck Street. Okay, so you're gonna put that in the form of a motion?
Do we want to put on extra condition that signage you have to go on that?
Sure. Did you want to make a motion? You can definitely include that in the motion.
I guess I'd make the motion, Christie, to
Sure.
approve the conditional use permit uh, for Riken's RV Park with the changes um, in the lot size and the access roads to that lot or to that new plot. As far as conditions, uh, signage um, off of Buck Street over on to Doe Avenue to limit the amount of access to that piece of property on off of Alphonse Road. I don't know if there's anything else that needs to be addressed. They talked about the fence. I think I kind of understand where Donna's coming from, but I know that from the construction standpoint of building the driveways in there, it's pretty hard to put a fence up before you get the driveways all shaped and everything where it should go.
Like most of it.
So I think that um, that can be done and he did have a time limit on their road to be built and completed by eight one of twenty twenty-one. So I would say that shortly after that, that the fences need to be up.
Right, we have a motion. We have a second. I'll call vote when you're ready.
Bart, excuse me, Barkle?
Yes.
Heavely?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion here. Okay, next item on the agenda is Richard List. Would you allow Mister Markport to go in front of you or do you want to just go and then he can wrap? Well, you know what? I don't think you have to take very long. And you are next on the agenda. This Markport shouldn't be very long.
Good evening, Board. I'm Richard List. I'd like to put up a slightly larger building than what is allowed on the said property, thirteen oh five Timberland Drive. I believe we are allowed four thousand square feet. Uh, I'd like to put up a building totaling six thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet. Uh, the set bikes are all within the guidelines except for the size of their building.
And you're an R one?
Yeah.
Oh. I have to read.
Yeah, read it.
Um, next item on the agenda is Richard List, conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for an accessory building in a low density rural residential district as per Article six, section six oh seven seventeen that exceeds four thousand square feet and the maximum total floor area for parcels in a low density zoning. Said property is legally described as list addition, the northeast quarter of section ten, T ninety-three north, range fifty-six west, hereafter referred to as Utica South Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. The E nine one one address is one three zero five Timberland Drive, Yankton, South Dakota. And then I need you to state your name, Richard List, for the
Richard List is my name.
Thank you. Sorry, I should have done it before you. Okay, is there anything else you want to? You're within a setback, so we don't have to do any variances.
No, ma'am.
So it's just a conditional use permit because you are oversized?
Correct.
All right. Do you have any questions for Mister List? Do you have any questions for Mr. List?
Richard, that is basically for storage?
Yes, put equipment in, get it out of the weather, cosmetically, make it look better.
Yep.
It's just that our current ordinance says we can only build them four thousand.
Right, but you can build it more if you get a conditional use permit.
What was it on the accessory buildings? What was that? Was that an R?
Yeah, that is an accessory.
Right, I know, but so we changed that once, so we didn't have these.
Right.
They just keep getting bigger anyway.
They do. That's the way of the world.
You never want to build too small.
That's right, then you gotta do it twice.
Correct.
Do we have any other questions before I ask for public input? All right, is there?
How big is it gonna be height-wise?
Fifty-five by actually one twenty, now one twenty-four.
Sixteen feet.
Sixteen, sixteen foot.
Sixteen foot.
Yep, that's what it says in the explanations here. We got big stuff, you gotta make it taller so it fits right.
Yes, it just.
So it's about fifty or sixty percent of the above.
But he's got room to do it. He's not asking for any variances or anything. You know, that's the nice thing about R one, is that's so preoccupied.
That's all, I am, I'm afraid nobody else does, yep.
No more questions for him?
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this particular issue? In favor or against, you know it? Hearing none, the time for public input or inquiry is now closed. You guys have any other questions for Mr. List, or I would entertain a motion? More tax money for the county.
No, no complaints from any neighbors, right?
No. Friends with all the neighborhood have no issues that I, I'm aware of.
Actually, it quite fits the neighborhood because there's a lot of big structures right within a mile of all that.
Yeah.
Bobbleau's buildings.
Oh, right.
Roger Hertz sheds and stuff there, the kids now live there, so, um, and it's kind of in an area almost, that corridor is almost kind of, almost being developed into commercials at some point, probably anyway, along there because of frontier mills and the stuff that goes on along that road anyway, so I don't.
Is that word said, is right west of there?
Pardon me?
Right west of there.
West of there, the next mile road.
Oh, okay, yeah. I don't know that area very well.
I'd make a motion to approve, um, the conditional use permit, uh, for Kevin List, to erect the fifty-five by a hundred and twenty-four foot building, which included sixteen foot lean-to, which exceeds the four thousand square feet, um, allowed in the ordinance, but because of the location and just the area, I think it's a, uh, it's an allowable structure.
And it's a good fit for the neighborhood.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. We'll call vote when you're ready.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Barkle?
Yes.
Heavly?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion passed. You got, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Markwart, we're ready for you.
I apologize for my tardiness this evening. I hate to waste your folks' time.
Okay, I need to read the legal report. Next item is Doug Markwart, conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a truck or equipment terminal in a commercial district. Said property is legally described as Joe Dean's Edition, Yankton County, South Dakota, as per plat recorded in book S seventeen, page six, and lot one in the north one hundred feet of lots two in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter in Section twenty-four, T ninety-four North, Range fifty-six West of the fifth PM. Hereafter referred to as Utica North Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota, as per plat recorded in book S eight, page one twenty-three. The E nine one one address is three oh six five three US Highway eighty-one, Yankton, South Dakota. And then if you could state your name, please.
Doug Markwart?
Thank you. All right, Doug, you're putting in a wash bay?
Correct.
Okay. Um, did you have to sink a new well for that, or did you have adequate water supply there already?
We've got adequate water supply when we built the addition for our building permit two years ago already. I don't know where that time goes.
Oh, yeah.
We put a floor drain in and there's a pit in there and, and, uh, that goes to the lagoon, the old, uh, Joe Dean's Lagoon out back.
All right.
If I remember correctly, Doug, back when you were in, previous and one of the times, we talked about the lagoon in the back and you said that you had talked to DNR and that was, um, at the time you reconstructed all that stuff, that it was approved for, or available big enough to handle the capacity of a wash?
I believe so. I, I think these folks, I think Bill and Gary have talked to this.
That's, that's correct. Uh, DNR actually called me and said that they don't have an issue with this unless they, they started discharging or something and then they would get involved, but otherwise they had no, no problem.
Basically become the containment pond.
Just evaporates off.
Yes, actually, we, I believe we added water several times this summer, and it was a dry summer, but it was a wet spring, but we were adding more water than, than anything.
But you're not gonna be, you're not gonna be like a, a cattle pot washout, or are you?
I, I, I guess to some degree I'd wash whatever came in the door within, within reason, of course. I'm not a cattle pot washout, but if a cattle pot washout, a cattle pot called and said it needed to be washed out and, uh, manure scooped out, I guess I've got no problem doing that. I've got the labor.
So are you gonna wash trucks per se? Just like a truck wash where the, where your, your own person would come in and wash it, or you're gonna have a crew that are gonna do it?
At, at this time, I've got a couple of guys in my shop that wash our own equipment, and I've got some company-owned equipment with some wat, with some washing requirements on it that I, that those guys take care of, and we're, we're not I twenty-nine or anything. I can't imagine we're gonna get a ton of traffic, but, but there is certainly truck drivers come in that need to wash the mud off or, or wash out.
I was gonna make an appointment for a couple, so.
What, what do you do with our equipment, Joe?
Oh, we've got sixteen-foot wide doors, I believe, uh, in the one bay and fourteen in the other, and the, the drain is between the two bays, so I mean, common sense, you do what you need to do, and, and, uh, I gotta, my shop is there. I've gotta be there for the next probably twenty years, I'm guessing, so I don't want to create a mess for myself on my own property.
And this is in the existing structure that you've got there now, correct?
Correct. You know, if, if things, if things change, I guess I'll come back down here, but I.
So the work is actually, if the valuation shows zero, you don't have to do anything as far as, you just need the permit to, you just want to get approved.
I just want to do it the right way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The D, the D E N R said if you're a good neighbor, that helps a lot, so.
Yeah.
In light, let's get all this here. Ready? All right, do we have any other questions for him before I ask for input from the audience? Hey, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this proposed change? Hearing none, the time for public input is now closed. All right, um, if you have any other questions, bring them forth or come up with a motion, please.
I'll move approval of the request.
The conditional use permit?
Yes.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. We'll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Heavly?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
There you go.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, we have a series of plats. Is there anything you want to bring forth, questions or comments on these plats, Gary? Nope. Pretty much run of the mill of what's there?
Yeah, not at this, not at this time. I will present for the Pioneer Hills one, since that was something that was mandated by the county commission.
I'm just gonna turn this way so that I can get you down. The first plat is lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two in Crestview Home Subdivision, located in the northeast quarter of Section twenty-one, T ninety-three North, Range fifty-six West of the fifth PM in Yankton County, South Dakota. And the re-plat, is that a separate one? Yes, it is. All right, so do I have a motion on this plat?
Make a motion to approve those plots.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
We'll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Heavly?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Hey, re-plat of lots one and two, Pioneer's Hills Edition, a subdivision of parcel F of the northeast quarter of Section seventeen, T ninety-three North, Range fifty-six West of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, hereafter referred to or to be known as lot four, block two, Pioneer Hills Edition, a subdivision of parcel F in the northeast quarter of Section seventeen, T ninety-three North, Range fifty-six West to the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Do we have a motion on this plat?
Just a quick comment on this before we make a motion. Uh, yeah, this, this, uh, was requested by the, the county commission to get it closer into compliance, since he, he owned both lots and, uh, put a manufactured home on it. They, they requested that he tie the two together, and so he's doing that to comply with their request.
All right.
I'll move approval of the plat.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second her.
We'll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Heavly?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Plat of lots three and four of parcel three of Cory Pines Edition in the northwest quarter of Section sixteen, T ninety-three North, Range fifty-six West of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Anything special about this one? You want to read it? No? Okay. I would entertain a motion on this plat.
I'll make a motion to approve this plat, Brad.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We'll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Heavly?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hey, motion carried. Next plat of lot six, block two, law over law, overlooked subdivision in the northeast quarter of Section eighteen, T ninety-three North, Range fifty-six West of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Anything remarkable about this plat? Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Heavly?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Bruce Jensen, petition for review committee appointment. Do you want me to just read it?
No.
Okay, so this is a petition for review for a committee appointment, so he has three changes that he's proposing, and it needs to go through the, uh, planning commission first, and then it will go on to the, uh, county commission. The three changes are minimum lot shall be two acres, minimum lot size. He is changing class F to fifty to ninety-nine animal units, and class E to one hundred to nine hundred and ninety-nine units, animal units, and then Section F and Section E will be one quarter mile setback. The other setbacks will be no less than half a mile. Are there any changes other than that that you want to explain? That pretty much sums it up. All right. So he's asking for a motion on this action.
Can we get, uh, any advice from state attorney like we were asked for last time?
I think, is, did you look at it? Apparently it's okay to go to the board now?
Yeah, I have, the state actually does have it.
I, I didn't. I don't know that it's Mr. Conach would do it. I, I didn't know it would be like.
It says it has to go through the commission board. Stand yes or no, I don't really care, so I can take the position to vote. I've done it four times now.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the fourth time he's brought it here, but we've asked every time for clarification of process from the state's attorney or somebody with some kind of legal advice, and we haven't gotten clarification.
They don't really want to say. Sorry.
Well, we asked for clarification.
Specifically says that the board of commissioners have to vote on. Yes or no, I don't matter. I just have to have the minutes for that, uh, ordinance, so I can vote to the decision. That's what I asked, I have state law.
But what we asked last time is we didn't feel comfortable voting on something that we didn't understand the process completely, and we asked for clarification on it, and we still know nothing more now than we did last time, so I don't see how we can.
Well, what do you want? It's pretty simple, two acres.
Well, what do you want? It's pretty simple. Two acres, animal units, setbacks. It's real difficult, isn't it? These I've been wanting to, four times now. I'm tired of it. Let's take the vote of the people. That's all I want. They're gonna decide. You people cannot decide. The commission can decide. They'll decide for us very soon.
Okay.
I don't give a vote yes or no for it. It don't matter to me. I got half thousand record that you guys voted on. That's all I care. If that's all it takes, I'll just make a motion to disapprove it.
Okay, so you're making a motion to deny it?
Deny it.
Okay, I will second that motion. Cause I agree. We've been here four times. The least we can do is take a vote and then it will become the county commission's issue. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to deny this petition for review.
Barkle?
So clarify if you vote yes, it's to deny?
Yes is to deny it.
Yes.
Heavley?
Yeah.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Abstain.
Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Abstain also.
Okay, so we have four yeses and two abstains. Motion carries. It goes on to the county commission. Then show me where it is. Because we have asked assistant state's attorney and I don't have anything one way or the other, so we will act on it. And we did. It was denied and it can go on to the next board.
What's your thought ma'am?
There was no official request from us to look at it. We.
I've talked, I've talked to Clemish many times.
And, and.
I don't care. Don't matter. Just look at, look at the statute, what it says. The commissioners have to vote on it.
But, but again, the question was how it would use for example.
It was presented the way it was. Fear told me it was right, so let the people decide.
Fear told you it was right?
Yes. And so the, by the way, by the way, Clemish sat with us, the two other guys, he dumped the credit. So this.
That's interesting. So we're, so we're, so we're voting on something that our state's attorney uh, wrote?
He didn't write it. I brought it up to him. I wanted to make sure I was doing it right. That's what you have to worry about. Oh, I can get sued every time. Don't we? I know I have to tell you that.
Okay, let's keep it civil.
What do you think here Gary?
I think you, you moved it forward, so that's all you can do at this point. Before we get on to the discussion of possible ordinance changes and the campground thing, just wanted to let you know that the county commission has set dates to discuss article five for Monday, January twenty-fifth at six PM and Friday, February fifth at nine AM for anybody that wants to come in and, and listen in on that and make public comments if they choose. So just wanted to get that in there.
Say those once more, please Gary.
Monday, January twenty-fifth at six PM, Friday, February fifth at nine AM. And um, you have in the packet, uh, the things that uh, commissioner Clemish had proposed at the last meeting and then um, the handout that I gave you tonight on some things that commissioner, or planning commissioner Williams had submitted. So discussion on campgrounds, just real quick, is just that uh, if you wanna start thinking about, we've had a lot of discussion the last few meetings about how campgrounds work in the year and the concerns about year-round residents, what we're doing with the septic on them, a number of things. Just start thinking about that of how you would like to see campgrounds progress in the future and uh, start having that discussion because there's, there's a number of concerns out there. Highway, the west side, you know, we've had three campground proposals recently and, and there's been a lot of comments on them. So just start thinking about that and, and, and that's why Don brought up, uh, we were talking about and whether or not it's time to start moving forward again on revising the comprehensive plan and having that discussion since that kinda uh, went away in twenty fifteen. So just a couple of things to start thinking about.
And this handout that, that, that we did a little bit of work on, kinda followed the meeting that we had at the archery center, which you guys were all invited to and some of you did come.
We're gonna do Dan Clemish first?
No.
Because we haven't had time to read this.
Okay.
I mean, I just got this when I walked in the door.
Yeah, I didn't know we were gonna go through any of them. I thought we were done.
Did you wanna go home then or what?
Yeah. It made no difference. It's just something that the proposals.
I would, I would appreciate if we, you know, I got a chance to look at this and then we could talk about it next meeting, next month if you want.
Christie, I've gotten several documents and emails the day of the planning and zoning that said, here's an agenda that was turned in late. Sorry, I, I, I work a full time and my wife does too. We work on this stuff. It got in here today. It is, we're not gonna vote on anything and you guys can just look at this. This, this is some things to bring through the commission possibly in two weeks on the twenty-fifth.
And if you're gonna speak.
Sure.
Gary, Bill and I uh, met uh, yesterday I guess. Yeah, and discussed article five in the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so who met?
Gary, Bill and I.
Gary who?
Gary better.
Better.
Zoning.
Oh, okay.
And we, we discussed the need uh, to get the comprehensive plan updated, uh, which is really uh, a step that should be done in the, in the planning process prior to changes in article five, but I think they can, they can go along consecutively. And, and we kinda committed that we'd have a game plan to have both of those documents ready for review uh, by the first of June. So we're looking at four to five months to go through the process and, and get it done to the point where uh, consented to the commission to vote on. And quite, quite frankly, uh, the things that are being proposed in the initiative would all be covered in, in that process. And I believe that's a process that the county commission recommended, oh, maybe a couple of months ago. We've talked about having a possibility of uh, more open meetings to discuss so the public can have input. And uh, basically that's where we went. But I agree with uh, it's too long. We need, we, we need to get this thing done and so did Bill and Gary, Gary and Bill. So.
Are you gonna look to any outside interest maybe to help write that? To work on this comprehensive plan, Don?
I'm gonna contact uh, district three.
Well, we already have a working plan. You're talking about starting from scratch?
Revision of the existing plan.
Okay, revision part of that.
Yeah.
One thing I would like to see um, back originally and I, for the life of me cannot find mine, but we were given copies of the comprehensive plan at the board when this ordinance first started. And I know that you can access it on the website now, but I would, I don't know, I don't remember how many pages it is, but it'd be really nice to have a hard copy.
About a hundred and thirty.
So I could kinda go through and write on it or do things so we could start looking at that because in all honesty, that should have been done before any of this.
That's the bible.
And uh, and we discussed this, uh, we, we looked at uh, I looked at uh, Minnehaha County's uh, comprehensive plan, hundred and forty, fifty pages long. There's a, there, there's a whole lot of stuff in, in this plan that seems like it could be eliminated. A lot of uh, demographics. Not sure who would be interested. Gary's gonna uh, examine if there's an option to do an executive. Something that if you gave it to somebody, they might read it instead of a hundred and fifty pages of.
Condense it?
Yeah, condense it. And if we can, if we can do that, uh, I think it'd be far more useful document to anybody that would be interested in reading it if they wanna come for, not just farmers, but as manufacturers wanna come and anybody, any business. So that's.
The thing of it is, when it was originally developed, you know, we sat for many, many nights going through that thing and, you know, doing it, but the dynamics of the county have changed so much in the last twelve years, how many years? I don't know. It's been since it started, two thousand and three, seventeen years?
Seventeen, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, the original was two thousand and three and.
But, but if you go, if you go and look at, at the comprehensive plans of Minnehaha's, ours, what they're looking at and many of these pages is information that was from the two thousand and twelve census or the two thousand and eight census. In material. Yeah, immaterial, uh.
Yeah.
Today's world and, and that's what we hope to be able to condense down. So we still have the right information, but uh.
So are you, are you proposing that we put information from the twenty, the twenty twenty census in there or just eliminate all the demographic information off?
Well, I don't mind putting in any information that we have, uh, that's, that's current.
Okay.
But going back to me is meaningless. Who's gonna read it? And if they didn't, what would they care? But that's, that's what we talked about yesterday and our game plan going forward. And I'm the liaison to planning zoning, but our game plan going forward, I think revolves around this. I think we're pretty convinced we need for the public's sake to get these two documents updated and approved.
And I can certainly, Dennis, um, get, get the original and the marked up one from twenty fifteen to everybody. We'll send those out, hard copy to everyone.
I'm wondering when we got on the board, when I got on the board, I wonder if we got a comprehensive plan.
I don't think.
Yeah, I've, I've got an old one from way, way.
From way, way back, but I, I don't.
Gary.
When we started, when we started this whole process, I don't even remember what year it was, but.
Gary can give it to you. It's right. He gave me one yesterday, so you can get it and look at it.
Is that the one? Is that it there?
That's it.
I think I have that, cause I, I, I think I remember seeing all those yellow lines and stuff. I like to look.
It had all the demographics of what was going on.
Right.
Spending, uh, it was, it was rings and rings paper.
Mm-hmm.
And it's got maps and everything.
You got copies of it here?
Yes.
And, and we've talked that this commission and the county commission need to uh, take again a look at what our constituents feel is, is what they want. So it, we need to take another look at things, but we need to get it done.
Well, we ran into a lot of situations just from the zoning map standpoint and everything where the last few years we've had to make some changes or, you know, probably issued more variances or more, you know, conditional uses, whatever, but just simply because of the, you know, Yankton's not growing like Sioux Falls, but it's growing. It's, it's growing in different places and there's a lot of things, you know, it's like the campground house on that lake Alexis, that Mr. Evans wanted to build and those things like that. I mean, when we built, originally built the ordinance, nobody thought nothing about that because it was just a pocket walk in the country.
You're right.
You know, so a lot of that stuff was changing and because of development, whatever, we have to look at that, but we also have to protect what's there.
Well, and that's why we updated the size of the accessory structures. It just wasn't, it just wasn't working for the public anymore. Everybody has big campers and, and boats and whatnot. They wanna keep them out of the weather. This is the first variance, I, I mean, conditional use permit that we've had that since we changed it. So we've alleviated a lot of that off of the, the planning and the, and the county commission doing all those variations. So I think that, that change has worked in my opinion. I mean, this one was an outlier, but it's still gonna accommodate him. You know, he didn't ask for variance or anything. It was just when his bigger building. So I think it fits the needs of most people is what I think.
Yeah. So that's, that's what we've talked about. If, if that, I wish Mr. Jensen was here to listen to what our plans are. Uh, I suppose you can look at it on the recording.
Just a little bit for clarification, Don and Gary. Uh, the meeting that you talk about on the twenty-fifth and the one in February is, that's strictly on article five?
Correct.
And the comprehensive, that'll just have done internally?
Three years ago, we went through with Pat, we went through uh, several sections of the comprehensive plan and updated. Gary's gonna uh, research and see if he can find those documents and if he can, uh, a great deal of that work has probably been done.
I have it in the office, so.
And I, I think we were two-thirds or three-fourths through it.
We worked on it a long time.
Yeah.
A long.
Yeah.
And just to Dennis's comment, a couple of months ago, we were asked about some population stuff and out west, just south, on the south side of the highway, we're over thirty-one hundred people now, so things are changing.
Well, you notice where all the actions were today.
All south.
All south.
South and west.
Thank you, Gary.
One, one of my concerns though in this, as we start doing this stuff, um, I noticed in, in Dan's proposal, what we got in the packet, just raising through it a little bit that I'm concerned about, you know, when we set up the original districts as far as R one, R two, R three and put the lot size and stuff like that. And you had people purchase property out there on a five acre lot because they wanted the isolation and stuff like that. And I'm a little concerned about walking in and changing that down to an acre, two acres, just so you can build more lots out there for protection for those people that thought they were gonna own five acres and now they don't, you know, or now they got houses all around them.
I mentioned that to him. It's kinda like wanting to have twenty acres shifts instead of two acres in ag districts now.
Well, we have, have had several conversations about that, about, you know, I know even more is for Mr. Jensen's, why I'm here about the two acre thing, but it doesn't say, it says that you can't build a livestock facility within twenty-six hundred and forty feet of a residence, but it doesn't say anything about you can't build a residence within two hundred and forty.
No.
Within twenty-six hundred and forty feet of a livestock.
Right, right. And that's, we've had that conversation before. I think like Minnehaha, what do they got, uh, forty acres is the minimum?
No, they got a one acre min, they've got a one acre deal, but they uh.
I'm talking about an egg, eggs on there.
In an egg zone. Oh, I've got those, I've got those here.
And they can divide them, divide it four ways.
Right, you could have, you could have four and forty, Joe was talking about that.
Yeah, yeah.
But they also have to, they also have to have a sign to, to the deed of the land like I implemented it here, the right to farm. That, these things happen out here. Um, you know, that, that's a huge, that's a huge part to have that, that right to farm brought back into uh. back into, in our ordinance as if we go to something, if we change something there.
Well, the ability to convey that as we're moving down the road and to get that across the fact that, you know, even in my neighborhood, I mean, things have changed so much, I mean, I grew up there, so it's, you know everybody, you did know everybody, but now you don't because, and, you know, when, you know, the worst thing that happened was when the land prices got high and they all wanted to sell the building site off of the land to pay, you know, offset the land cost and so they plotted out and sold the land or the building site off.
Right.
And that's kind of got it started, but I mean, that's water under the bridge, so it's going to change, but, but.
Most of when we were kids, nobody wanted to live in the country anyway because they couldn't get out in winter. It's a gospel church, two-wheel drive, they're good. Nobody wanted to live out there. Four-wheel drives, let everybody go everywhere.
Change them a bit.
Yeah, change them up.
Is there anyone on the list for public comment?
Louis Johnson, Ballin', South Dakota. I really here for only one reason and that is to congratulate Zane Williams on the award that him and his wife received from Ag United. And I personally thank him and his wife and everyone included in that group. I'd start naming people, but I'll forget somebody, so I'm just going to quit with Zane and Sandy. When you're sitting in the bottom of a well and having everybody take a crap in it on top of your head every time you try to do something legal, it was so nice and so much appreciated, the work that people that weren't really associated with me went through to help bring this up to some sort of resolution. And we all sat at the meetings and we all found out that raising pigs was going to kill everybody in the whole world and it only took a year in court or actually over. It cost a hell of a lot of money. But I for one have been in hog barn for two years and I pretty much quit using my COPD medicine, for whatever reason, my breathing has gotten better. But back to the reason I'm here and that is to thank you for your effort, your work and the fact that your group is educating people and young people, that it's not how it was a hundred and fifty years ago. Things have changed and after raising two pigs in a modern way for, for two years, it is absolutely unbelievable, the response that you get and the health of the livestock and the lack of the amount of drugs you give them, that they receive virtually nothing as far as antibiotics. Anyway, I thank you for your work, Zane, and I think the rest of you ought to appreciate the fact that Zane and his group put in a lot of effort to try to make the county a better place and not try, try to drive people out of the county thing.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Okay, that looks like the end of the list for public comment.
I'd make a motion to adjourn, man, Jim.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
See you all next month.